Yeah, no, they're not here.
I can't hear you, bud.
You're dressed up.
Enough, I have my work gown. Winters in my hand.
He put a nice shirt on so it was like...
We actually can't go to the thing. Those things aren't happening here.
So fun readings. That's interesting reading.
I sent my comments.
Oh, you have them already?
Some of them were mad at me. Pretty much, you know, it was like I was determined to not have to do it tomorrow.
Okay, everyone ready? Get into place.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, we wish invisible liberty and justice for all. May Miranda?
Here.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Valotto?
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. Going to meeting to order, our first monthly meeting of the year. So we'll go through our usual Police Department report.
Good evening, everybody. Happy boy in the new year. For the month of December, we had forty-three calls for service, bringing that total up to eight oh six for the year. We had two arrests for the month of December, both more for vehicle infractions. One was driving without a driver's license, I'm sorry, one was driving without a driver's license, the other two were saying one incident but two charges, which also consisted of two arrests for an order of protection violation. So it was one VTL and one order of protection violation. So bringing the count for the month for three. Tickets, we had twenty-six moving park, uh, moving violation, I'm sorry, thirty-seven moving, uh, parking summonses and twenty-six moving violations. Total number of tickets for the month of December is sixty-three, and the total number for the year was one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight. Just on one other incident upcoming, I sat down with Dave Amorzola, and we talked about the five K run, and it looks like as long as he gets the okay from Ford Gate that we're going to go that route. I also got a phone call from the Sheriff's Office, and he said if we need any deputies for that, that they'd be more than willing to help us out, with a couple deputies for traffic control and stuff like that.
All right, from the year-to-date, is that a calendar year or the village's fiscal year?
No, it's calendar year, from December to, uh, December to December. January, January.
Okay, thank you. So you have nothing from the Rec Department, late entry from Planning Board, which will accept.
Sorry about that.
Do you like to deliver in person?
Oh, sure. Old business, we have twenty-one Parsonage, I think it was pretty familiar with the proposed removal of the shed and redevelopment. It's putting new residents on the structure, or new residents on the site, requiring specific variances, that's in front of the ZVA, the public hearing is still open. They've asked us for an advisory opinion. The site plan, it seems, is almost identical to the one that we issued an advisory opinion on back on June fourth, so the Planning Board will speak with the applicant. The applicant was invited in on the ninth, so we'll find out what they're, whether or not they intend to present to the Planning Board. If they don't intend to present, they will issue pretty much the same opinion, which is basically to make it as conforming as possible, if they were to go ahead with the area variance, because the area variance is so large. We did the Butterfield Site Plan Amendment for the modification of the protection easement. When the tree was removed, we felt it was best to at least keep a protected tree on the site. You know, we had lost, you know, obviously a cultural asset that folks wanted to keep, but at least we could have a protected tree. The Planning, the Tree Advisory Board suggested a baroque, mature baroque, so that'll go. We did offer it to them, because we thought it made sense to just relocate the tree into the park as opposed to jammed in. It was very tight between the, if the residence gets built and the, where the community center is for the, for the large building. So that's relocated to the park, the plan shows that. The Tree Advisory Board also asked that in the location where they have the Copper Beach, they plant a London plane tree. That would not be under protection, but at least it'd be one tree under protection, because obviously we don't protect trees on private property. But this easement was already in place, so they're going to modify that. We reviewed the resolution as well as the draft documents for the easement to be filed with the county, and so that should move forward now with John, the attorney. One fourteen Main Street, that's the Tightrope office space across the street. Applicant's in front of us, two, for a change of use for a mixed use for retail and cafe. Pretty straightforward, we had planning, we had a public hearing on the ninth, we had to hold a public hearing in the comment section open because of planning. The applicant forgot to bring the evidence of neighbor notification, the green cards. So we still went ahead and held the hearing, because we thought they've been sufficiently constructed now, saying the posters are great, you know, people are seeing those, they're seeing the ad, but obviously we need to see those green cards before we can take final action. One question I had is, is the, is the Village Board or is Code Update Committee doing anything for outdoor dining? Because they wanted to show tables outside, and they said, well, it's the same as, you know, it's the same as the cafe, you know, the Garden Cafe next door. I said, we can't show them on our site plan, they're not in the code, so I said, remove them. Because I said, as of this time, we can't really be showing tables out there. And also too, they're set, they're, they have the restrictions of the three feet off the, you know, front facade, so we advised the applicant to remove them, because I said we can't really go forward. But I asked them to see you guys, if they want, if they want to talk about what was, you know, what's, what's happening next door.
I believe it's in Chapter one oh eight. I think that's where it's at. And that has not yet been reviewed by the Village Board.
Right, yeah, and that's just a, that was just a temporary trial, right? It's still kind of in effect? The, the outdoor dining code?
It, it, it makes it part of the code.
Okay.
So it's not a, a trial, it would codify.
In the new, oh, the code, in the new code, oh, okay, very great, very good. That's it, any questions for me?
Is the zoning tomorrow after they?
I think it got canceled again.
Canceled today.
Oh, got canceled.
They think it's pushed to February now.
Oh, okay.
That may be why they didn't show up with us, because there's some scheduling issues, so I, I'll, I sent an email out to the applicant, I haven't heard back, as to why, you know, why they didn't come in and speak to us. But as soon as we find out, then we'll issue our opinion over there.
On the, on one fourteen, I can't remember the problems or if we had them with the public area, how that kind of turned around down there when they put in the kind of service bar for foods, and then we have the hairdresser, and we have whatever. Is this one more clear cut than that, or?
Yeah, well, of course, it's about a single applicant. That one was multiple, it was somebody subleasing like a partial space inside of another business. And, and the bigger challenge was that the entire space hadn't been reviewed, right? This one, even the applicant's architect said, well, you know, we, we have the grandfathered spaces from Tightrope, and then, you know, not, he had referenced another application, had worked on the PCNR building when the PCNR moved in there. I said, no, I said, since 2010, there's the parking waivers, the code changes, you have to comply with the current code. The parking, you know, the payment and leave parking waiver is a one-time use, right? So the question is whether or not all those other services in there could be brought up, but that applicant wasn't even in front of us, right? You have this little carved-out piece, you're doing this limited review. It was very strange. This one's not like that at all, it's a single applicant, taking the whole space. So basically, in the back, where it's retail, it's one, you know, it's one parking space per hundred and fifty square feet, and then in the front, where it's cafe, it's one space per three seats. And the only thing that's grandfathered is just the one for each, for Main Street business. So it's roughly calculates, it calculates out to twelve parking spaces, if memory serves, and then minus the one grandfather, require eleven parking waivers.
Doesn't it sound, it just seems to me unreasonable to grant fourteen parking waivers for one, well, the whole concept of the parking waivers, I have difficulty.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I try to explain them in the Planning Board meetings, you know, that there is some logic behind it when you look at the, you know, when you look at the introduction of it, to basically take that money and apply it towards parking, you know, solutions, like you guys use it for parking meters, which I think gives great, greater revenue streams, you know, because it kind of feels like you're selling air, right? Because there is no, there's no, you don't go find your twelve spots, you know, marked out on the street. So, but, you know, as I understand it, and I look at the kind of the stuff that introduced a while, which is, you know, I think it was Mayor Gallagher at that time, and then the boards have reviewed it, it was that, you know, it was a way to, for commercial applications to process changes of use without doing what they were doing, which was just kind of smoke and mirrors of, well, go get a lease from somebody that will lease you parking spaces, you know, in some garage, you know, a mile away, you could just show evidence of that, which was even, I mean, that wasn't really a reality either, people weren't, you know, the residents on Main Street, or shoppers on Main Street weren't going to go find these, you know, garage spaces and pulling in, and so it, that's kind of what the, my understanding of it is. But yes, it's, it's a lot, you know, and it is, because the applicants kind of say, well, where am I, you know, the kind of thought is, well, where are my spaces? And that's not really what it is. But I do think there is some, you know, some logic there to kind of use that money to apply it to parking issues, you know, a very real concern.
What about changing it from a one-time payment to an annual fee?
Well, I think that's, I think that's something to consider, I mean, it's not a, it's not a terribly large, I mean, I'm sure the merchants would, you know, would have something to say about that. And then certainly then you, you know, then you really, I think, are open to, what are you doing with that money? You know, as you sell me this, you know, this space that I can't find, what are you doing to resolve the issue of parking? But if you could, I, I think, sure, I mean, I think if that would help with respect to, you know, addressing the parking problem, that is a very expensive problem, right? You know, I mean, we don't have land, parking garages are a fortune to build, because they're structurally so, you know, so expensive. But yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, and I've been very, I've been very, you know, very clear with folks who are there for a one-time use, you know, you come back for a change of use again, or somebody else comes back. And that's why we should make sure, I think, that even though we have these businesses changing over on Main Street, that they probably should be referred to the Planning Board again, right? Because even though the use is identical, the, the site plan should be updated, and the parking waiver should be updated, right? Because otherwise, then nobody ever pays for parking waivers if the use never changes. And they're really for a one-time use, which is, and as I've explained to the applicants, like this applicant at one fourteen Main, I said, listen, should you decide to turn the back into retail, you know, seating as well, it's, you don't have to replace the ones in the front, right? Because that's, that's not really, that's not really a new use, it's the same applicant expanding the existing use. But if it's a new applicant coming in and saying it's a restaurant, they're supposed to be, the way the code reads, they should be bought again.
So Matt is putting thirty-three seats roughly in the front, and then his retail in the back? Is it one waiver for every three seats?
One per three, right, right. And I, no, I think there's, um, there's quite a few seats in the front, I think eighteen or something like that.
Tell me, coming up, I'm looking at eleven parking waivers that you're saying.
So it's a hundred, it's about a thousand square feet, I think, in the back of retail. So one per one fifty.
Oh, okay.
And then, um, whatever the balance is, is the, is the, is the seat count, twenty-two, twenty-three, I don't have the applicant in front of me. But it's all prepared foods, they're not doing any cooking on site, it's just, um...
And does he have, is that parking lot behind you? Is there a parking lot that stretches behind that building? Is that also part of the corner building? That same owner?
Yes, it is.
It's the same owner, yeah, and I, yeah, that's a good question, I don't know.
And the parking, and the parking.
There is parking for the apartments, yeah.
Parking just ended, that doesn't?
It's just, it's right behind Garden Cafe.
Okay, doesn't extend past?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just right behind that section.
Right, okay.
And I don't know how that was approved, but I imagine that was all, that was all applied to the apartments, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Zoning, current business, on December nineteenth, Board opened a public hearing for the application for variances needed to construct a home at twenty-one Parsonage Street. Donald McDonald led the meeting as acting chair. Hearing continues on February sixth. I didn't see that before, that's why I was asking. Let's see, zoning, town of Phillips Town, see anything, historic district review, nothing. Fire Company?
Yeah. Yeah. Cold Spring Fire Company responded to eight alarms in December, and had a grand total of one hundred and fifty-five alarms for the year of 2019. And also effective immediately, or as of January first, the position of chief will be Tom Marigan. For, I don't know how long their terms are as chief, because the previous chief, I don't know if he even made a year, or, I know Steve Smith was chief for several years. Curious how that works.
Okay, thank you. Tree Advisory, December, the Tree Advisory Board did not hold a regular meeting due to the holiday. We did complete our fourth quarter progress report for the New York D.C. Priority Street Tree Maintenance Grant, which is on file with the Village Clerk, excuse me, for your review. The main part of the grant, we are currently working on specifically the scope of village-wide priority pruning work. We expect to complete it in two groups. One will not occur until the holiday lights are removed from Main Street trees in late February. Special thanks go out to the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce for spearheading the solar light project in a way that didn't harm trees. We thought they looked great and hope in the future more can be added. We also completed and submitted the village's application for fourth year renewal of Cold Spring Trees City USA status, and are in contact with George Propas, our New York D.C. Forester regarding that application. We'd like to thank the mayor and the Village Board for voting to welcome local resident and ISA-certified arborist Tara Ayitaka to the Tree Board, and look forward to our first full board meeting with his attendance on January twenty-second. Happy New Year to all. Let's see, Code Update.
The CUC met once in December, on December eleventh, to present their recommendations to the Village Board and turn over the project to the Village Board. During the meeting, there was discussion on the history of the Code Update Committee, the funding, the schedule going forward to receive additional funding. The CUC has no planned additional meetings scheduled, but will be available to provide advice and consultation to the Village Board should that be required. At this point, the Village Board will review the recommendations and accept the recommendations as provided, modify the recommendations as needed, or reject the recommendations. Public meetings will need to be held, and public hearings will also be required, all under the auspices of the Village Board. A secret will need to be developed. Once all input has been received by the Village Board, the Village Board will decide what changes should be incorporated, and then formally modify the village code. The December conference call with NYSRDA was canceled by NYSRDA. There are still some invoices from the CUC consultant and legal counsel, which have not yet been received. Once received, requests for reimbursement will be submitted to NYSRDA.
Thank you. No one from the Chamber of Commerce. Now our, our hot seat person of the night, Matt Krug in the water department.
All right, so for the month of December, the reservoirs were at roughly ninety-five percent capacity, roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand gallons a day, fourteen percent increase from this time last year. All monthly bacteriological lab test results were found in good standing. Water meter readings, we do have a list of about thirty-five residents that need to get physically inspected, as of speaking with Badger, and then possibly replaced under warranty if it further deemed so. We also replaced two of the three overflow clarifier screens at the water filtration plant. Filter one was done within the past year and a half. All three filtration units do need to be rehabbed as they are showing their age from nineteen ninety-seven. Discolored water in the district, December wasn't as bad as this past weekend, but we do have some hits of iron and manganese being elevated in the samples that we collected after being contacted for the discoloration. We've also increased our daily analysis for the raw points throughout the filtration process, century point distribution, which we've upped to twice a day. Catskill DEP project, we did approve and authorize the Beatty and Watson survey for the possible DEP connection, and that was done on December eleventh. Haven't heard back from them as yet. Do you want to go into this weekend? Or do you want to say that for next month?
Can you finish wastewater, and then we'll go to that?
All right. So wastewater, forty months, January or December of two thousand nineteen, our average was about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand gallons a day. BOD and TSS removal were in normal range, ninety-seven percent BOD, ninety-three percent for TSS. We had twenty-three thousand gallons of liquid sludge hauled off-site. Nine fast street, the depression in the roadway, we attempted to optoscope the depression in the road on twelve-eleventh for possible leaks, results were inconclusive. We reviewed the latest inspection data concluded done, or conducted in April of two thousand nineteen, but it seems this area was not inspected. We'll be reaching out to the residents to schedule an inspection of the zirral lateral to the main for, from the residents, to see what else could be done for that before getting that second of the main inspected. Kemble Ave pump station, still trying to get that scheduled, didn't happen before the holiday and end of the year, so still working on that. I do have the quotes for the upgrade to the Kemble Ave pump station, as well as moving or relocation of the existing manhole monitor on site there to the lower main estuary for callouts of high level, which are behind in port. Sludge de-watering pilot study, we've increased the sludge wasting regimen significantly since the last review of P and D engineering visit on site, and will reevaluate whether or not the press upgrade is indeed needed. As a change of existing polymer to the system seems to be working out fairly well, with constraints of the system. All right, fire away.
Okay, so it's, it's hard to react to, on Friday, there were a lot of complaints about the water discoloration.
Yes.
More than usual.
Yes.
Hugely more than usual.
Yes.
It was a Trumpian term. So I didn't find out till around three o'clock, when I stopped by the office. At that time, we had like twenty to forty, I think, complaints, either call-ins or people walking into the office about discoloration. So a, a few things that I'd like to clear up, first of all, it's, it's very hard to communicate to the public that quickly, you know, we can send out email blasts to some people, or whatever, but while Matt's trying to figure stuff out, that's not always the easiest thing to do. So, so I've, so what I'd like to say is that, first of all, Matt was on top of this right, right off the bat, as soon as the concerns came in, he was talking to residents, he was getting back to people, as was Jeff, trying to alleviate the concerns, or going and taking samples and seeing what was going on. So it wasn't like we weren't concerned, it's not like we aren't concerned about the discoloration and what happened, this was kind of an anomaly, it's, it's happened before, but this was like a lot of people at once. So I'd like to emphasize, one, the, our water supply lines were put in in eighteen ninety-five or six, somewhere back then.
Right.
They're cast iron.
Yeah.
If anyone's ever seen cast iron, if they've taken apart a building or something, and there's cast iron pipes, they flake off, they deteriorate, and what happens are what the theory is, and has been for as long as Greg was here, and I've been here, and Matt's now here, and if you go online and look this up, what they do is flush systems because sediment, or because rust buildup starts flaking off, and if it flakes off, I guess, I don't know when or where or how, but this happens, and then those, those metals are then flushed into the system. Usual protocol is that you flush the systems as many times as you can during the year. Unfortunately, you have a drought, then you can't flush because you don't have water, so that stops this from happening, or if winter comes, you can't flush because you're flushing and everything turns to ice, so you can't do it. So Matt inherited a, a poor situation where we haven't flushed in almost a year, or?
There was a low-flow flush concluding when I first started, at the end of June, beginning of July. And low flow isn't really going to move and scour the water out through the district and remove it from the system, it's kind of just going to scrape the top layer of it, eliminate the potential upcoming, but it's not going to remove it, it's just going to lower it a little bit, so the accumulation will start, and then it's going to rear its ugly head when it does.
And so the other problems that we have is that we don't have like, you know, we don't have a lot of capacity, it's flowing through the pipes and keeping them clean, so when we have low use or slow use, this is how I'm understanding it, I asked Matt
You're doing a great job.
To really dumb it down, dumb it down for me, so I could explain, so I could understand also. So, one, we don't have a lot of capacity, or we're not a huge flow-through, so the sediment builds up, and, and then flakes off, and then the discoloration seems to happen.
Right.
Usually starts in Nelsonville this time, and in those areas, this time it seemed to be all over, or down towards at least a red light, and so it was more concerned. Matt's contacted both Putnam County to ask for their assistance, and seeing if there was anything missing. We did look to see if there was any leaks, the only way you can find leaks, from my understanding, again, is if the, if the amount of water we're using is out of the ordinary,
which it wasn't, and also if there's any surface water, so they drove through town,
so that wasn't one of the causes, because there was pressure lost in one person, one resident's house. So, you know, Matt was on top of it, we are still on top of it, and there are things we're looking at. We have a, a system built in eighteen ninety-six or five in there, it's an open system, it travels two and a half miles, it goes into our, into the treatment center where, or the facility where the water's clean, and then from there, it's tested, put in storage tanks, and then from there, it goes into your systems and comes to your house. So somewhere from the storage tanks down into the village, this is where the, the discoloration happens, and there's no kind of rhyme or reason where it happens or where this is actually coming from, you can't really pinpoint it. It sounds like, from what I understand, this is something you have to deal with, and the flushes are what mitigates the, the problem, and if you're not able to flush, then, then your stuff is what we have now. So we're looking for an opening to flush, which may not be till the spring, so people are going to have to bear witness for that, for that time, but that's a sorry, there have been some nasty things set out there, of course, Facebook likes to jump on stuff, on things like, you know, we don't have competent people, or for some reason, stuff as far as our hiring practices, or, or the amount of money we pay people, or, you know, you know, just things that have nothing to do with anything. I'd like to just say that Matt's has a very extensive, you know, history in the water and wastewater, that's why we hired him, we were glad to have him, he has a lot of experience, and he's on top of it. We're doing everything we can, and we are concerned about that. Not sure what the next steps would be, if everyone, you know, just would think about it for a second, what it would cost to redo all the pipes in the village, they were laid probably when they were dirt roads, now you're going to be making up macat and blacktop roads, and, and with the business and the amount of activity in town, you can just imagine what, what that would look like, and the cost would be phenomenal. So I guess that's something eventually we'll have to look into, that's not what we're going for right now. So, that if you'd like to add anything, I...
Well, I had multiple conversations with the Putnam County Health Department on how to go for this, and pretty much exactly what you said is the game plan. As soon as the weather's permitting it, and we can do it without jeopardizing the roads and everything else, full scour, flush, multi-direction, try and pull out and remove any of that. The other thing that they recommended is looking into a different corrosion control for the system. I've been in touch with other operators for similar systems that have been dealing with that, antiquated distribution systems, very old, just a similar iron and manganese, and they have recommended a different chemical, and again, speaking with Benny today, he said as soon as you guys are ready to do it, the perfect time would be doing it is right after the flush, start fresh with a new chemical, and then see what that does for the lining of the inside of the pipes. And that's pretty much where we're at as of five o'clock today. Okay.
I just have one thing to add.
What's that?
I just have one thing to add.
Yeah, sure.
If the residents were to run their water for an extended period of time, I mean, a lot of residents, would that aid at all? If we set up a period of time where so many liters of water...
The earliest complaint that we had on Friday was about eight-thirty is when we first started hearing it, and by one o'clock, those residents were back in clear water.
They just ran it?
Yeah. And some of them didn't, they just happened to turn it back on, and they were back in clear water. So depending on how the system, the slug moved through the system, they either could have pulled it in, could have not been affected whatsoever. We did collect coliform samples during the discoloration, just because in January, one of our required routine bacteriological tests came back positive for total coliform, absent free E. coli, which is good. Total coliform just happens to be in any water, but it was a requirement to do a re-sample. Re-sample had to take place on Friday. The original site came back clear, house next to it clear, house on the other side of it had discolor, sent everything in, they all came back within good standing. Putnam County's been notified, and it's basically exactly what the mayor had said, and that's the protocol moving forward, is hopefully we can get to that warmer weather fast, reservoirs will still be at full capacity, we can water scour, get everything that's been building up for the, since the last high-flow scouring, flushing event, which was done before my time, and then go from there.
That's normally done twice a year, right?
Uh, well, in the other sectors that I've been, it's usually three times a year, usually do it coming out of the winter.
I'm at the village, I don't know if you talked to Greg, but I thought it was twice a year, but...
Uh, didn't really get to that far with everything.
Twice a year.
It was twice a year?
Yeah.
We used to do it three times a year in other districts, but yeah, spring, summer, and right before the winter, and then usually you skate through the winter without having these issues, but...
Now those houses you spoke of, are they up on the hill?
Yes.
I'm at the village, I don't know if you talked to Greg, but I thought it was twice a year, but?
Uh, didn't really get to that far with everything.
Twice a year.
It was twice a year?
Yeah.
We used to do it three times a year in other districts, but yeah, spring, summer, and right before the winter, and then usually you escape through the winter without having these issues, but?
Now, those houses you spoke of, are they up on the hill?
Yes.
Okay, because there was some discoloration down, all the way down here on Main Street.
Yes, I did hear that as well.
You know, there's a mile between those two.
It has to go through those pipes to get down here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, as far as I know, it did, I would assume that it started up there and then just traveled through with the usage of A and rush of everybody trying to take a shower and then go to work. And that's basically where it was, we were bouncing all over the district trying to field as many phone calls. As I came in, still look for leak, get the coliform samples out as that was required, you have to do that within twenty-four hours of the lab results, which we did, and then, like I said, they all came back within good standard, discolored or clear, so.
It's like a cloud or something.
Kinda, I mean, once it flakes off, it just basically disperses, it gets either worse depending on the high volume going there or it could be very light and not even noticeable in some of the parts of the district.
I haven't seen it all, but?
I've heard that as well.
The other thing you were also in touch with are the person that subs, if you need another company or who is that, sorry?
Oh, the backup operator?
The backup operator, yes.
Yes, I've been in touch with him and he actually is currently working at this other system, he was the one that provided the information for the Campbellville, and he said once they made the switch over, pretty much everything stopped. So, I mean, as far as I know, this corrosion corrode chemical that we've been using now has been in use for quite a while, I'm not sure when it was last changed over, but sometimes that's all it really takes is just to switch over and the problem goes away.
A couple of months ago, we discussed buying a piece of equipment that would give you a heads up on something like this.
That's where we're getting all of our information from, we now know what our iron and manganese is coming in from the roll ore supply, we know how to do, address it with the sodium permanganin as it's going through the process, so that is not adding to the system. All the iron and manganese that has been in the system and believed to be the cause of it is basically being contributed to the age of the piping.
Okay.
No problem?
Just to clarify, the dirty water is not unsafe to anybody?
No, we had it sampled, we sent them out to the lab, so it came back, the results in twenty-four hours, it was nothing.
I mean, it's not dirty, discolored.
Discolored, yes.
I also had another, I drive by there every day on my way to work.
Okay.
Have the beavers returned? It looks like that dam's coming back together again.
Well, after coming out of the drought, I kind of left the beavers alone because impounding water wherever I can hold it is better than running out, so.
Oh, certainly.
We were kind of living coexistently right now.
Just like that, if anyone has complaints about the water, Facebook's not the place to go to, you should call, call down here so that we know that there's a problem somewhere because Matt doesn't go on Facebook at all, I go if somebody tells me there's something going on there or check it out once in a great while. It's not the way to communicate, if you have a problem or a concern, you should definitely call us, Matt's very responsive and will check your water out or whatever, and then that'll also help us in understanding who's being affected and how long, and we can, you know, maybe make better determinations by going on Facebook and complaining to each other, it's not the best way to deal with stuff, especially when most of us aren't even reading that. The smart people aren't. Anyway, I would, if you have concerns, let us know so that we can, you know, so we can react to it, so we know what's going on. There's some people that, you know, I mentioned to Matt that hadn't even contacted him that I see all the time, you know, filling bathtubs and, and it's terrible. I mean, the pictures, you know, you don't, if you have a kid, you don't want to put them in rust-colored water, so, but if we don't know about it, we can't do anything.
Pretty much it.
I'm sorry, one more question, you gave us some quotes?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation on these, do you need an approval on this?
Uh, well, we would need approval, I mean, it's basically a kind of mutual benefit for the highway department in their pump station as well as upgrading the Campbell pump station. But unfortunately, it's kind of a niche thing, it's, this is missions rep for the area, so we already have mission systems at West Street and Market Street. The manhole monitor that's currently in place is also part of the mission system, it's just very low-tech, it only really sends out the high level, which would be perfect for what he needs it for. But for our situation, high-level, low-level, pump fails and everything else, the upgrade would address all those issues that we're currently not getting.
So, one of these is better than the other?
Uh, no, one is actually just to move the piece of equipment that's already in place at Campbell down to the lower main estuary. To the new piece of equipment would go into Campbell and that would give us all the information that I just described.
Are these all within your budget, you can, if you talk to Michelle at all about that?
I believe they are, and I was going to follow up with her tomorrow, I just wanted to get it to everybody's attention and then go from there.
Someone to follow up with her, if we put it, put it on our agenda so we can prove it.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Building Department, do you have anything?
I do.
You want to read it, Fran?
No.
You don't want to? Uh, Building Department activities, new building permits, application received eight, building permits issued seven, dumpster permits one, COs issued seven, record searches completed one, complaints received one, referrals generated one each to HDRB, ZBA and planning. Fees, applications and permit fees collected thirteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars, record search fees collected seventy-five dollars and others thirty dollars, for a total in December of one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. Uh, I think you're up, Bugsy.
Evening, everyone. For the month of December, we had sixty-three point two tons of garbage recycling, we had twenty-four point eight tons. For December, we had three winter events amounting to six inches of snow and an eighth inch of ice. We did snow removal on Locust Rage End at the firehouse. Veeth Electric was on-site to install new LED lighting in the highway garage, which works beautifully, it's very nice. We had two brush collections, we used two yards of item four to repair the potholes on East Belvedere and Hamilton. We continued street cleaning to remove leaves from the gutters. Jerry Allen Tree Service, Phillips Town Tree Service was on location to remove two damaged trees from the storm on December first to third. We removed a small tree on power lines on North Street from the storm and one broken limb on the power lines on ninety across from Dunkin' Donuts. We brought the spreader motor for the two thousand sixteen Salter to A and S Ignitions to be rebuilt, we got that back and it works perfectly. We were gifted a back rack from South Padala and mounted it upon the two thousand nineteen F two fifty, and we then mounted a new work light on that back rack. We installed a new amber hazard light on the two thousand nineteen F two fifty. We fixed a bent tie rod on the two thousand eleven F three fifty, fixed non-working wiper motor on the eighty-nine International Salter, replaced non-working marker lights on the two thousand international garbage truck and a new headlight on the plow of the two thousand nineteen. Did oil changes on two thousand eleven and nineteen F two fifties and three fifties. We plugged a flat on the two thousand nineteen F two fifty and installed new cutting edges on the plows of the two thousand eleven and the two thousand sixteen. Joe acquired a wiring harness for the ninety-seven F three fifty, which we used to fix some issues we were having with that. And he also acquired a used light for the Salter, both were installed. He acquired a valve body for that plow as well, just trying to limp that through until we get to a better place in our budget in a year or two to get something else. And Inner City Tire was on-site to fix a flat tire with the eighty-nine International Salter. For the coming month, we'll be removing holiday decorations, repairing all potholes and continuing street cleaning of leaves and debris until the snow starts flying.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
I forgot I was going to see you tonight, Bugsy, so I called you and then after I talked to you, I got to see you tonight. Bugsy, we had gotten a call from Fred Norgard thanking for filling the sinkhole near his, near his house, so he was very grateful for the highway for doing that. Justice Court, fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties, five thousand five hundred and eight dollars, parking tickets, two thousand one hundred and sixty-five, civil fees, three hundred and fifty-five, mandatory state surcharges, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, for a total of ten thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Report, Mayor and the Board of Trustees, anyone have stuff they would like to contribute?
Well, tomorrow, the Village Board will be having a public meeting to review four chapters from the Code Update Committee, chapter five, chapter, chapter nine, chapter thirty-two and chapter forty-five. That's the Code of Ethics, the Community Choice Aggregation Program, dogs and alarms, not necessarily in that order. The next scheduled meeting is February fifth, where another approximately four chapters will be reviewed, all are welcome to attend.
Lynn, can you win?
I have a little bit of information from Putnam County, if that's of interest to folks. I found this particularly interesting, in their report last year, Putnam County realized four million dollars of collected sales tax over their projected sales tax revenue last year. My thought is that they shared just ten percent of that overage with Putnam's nine legislative districts. Our district would see an addition of forty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, which would go a long way toward helping deal with the impacts of tourism. I've written a letter asking them to do that, I've not heard anything back yet. Though they did, they are talking a lot about extending a transportation link from southeast to Danbury, yet not considering at all any kind of transportation link between the western part of the county and Carmel. I know a number of people who go to Carmel daily for different types of treatments and they have to drive there and back every single day, and it would be really helpful if there was some public transportation between Phillips Town, Cold Spring and Carmel. So I also wrote a letter about that, so.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn.
Steve?
Uh, yes, the overhead door people are coming to the treatment plant tomorrow to install those doors, or they're starting tomorrow, I don't know how long it's going to take.
That's great.
I'm meeting them tomorrow morning and also meeting a guy who does foundation waterproofing and things like that for the problem we're having between the firehouse and neighboring building, the former PCNR building. There's some mold issues taking place, it's only like a two-inch space between those two buildings and the mold is making its way through the wall into the fire station, so they're going to see what they can do about sealing that off. So I'm meeting that guy tomorrow for that.
Ryan? Thank you, Steve. Don't know anything, I don't. Let's see, okay, moving along here. Authorize, the mayor to sign agreement with prosecuting attorney. We met with prosecuting attorney Larry and I, met with two or three, two? Two candidates, not like they're jumping out of the woodwork to find us, anyway, we're lucky to find two very qualified people. The one person that we were recommending was, what is his name again?
Andres Gill.
Andres Gill.
Andres Gill, he is now the prosecuting attorney for Patterson, I believe. So we met with him and both Larry and I felt he'd be the best candidate, so I'd like to make the motion to, well, somebody else, I guess, should.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the prosecuting attorney, second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can't give you that, we have to have it notarized, so we'll do that tomorrow. Next is authorize mayor to sign MOU with Cold Spring Fire Company, I believe this is exactly the same as last year, so with someone to?
Dates are different.
The dates are different, yes, they are.
Hopefully, they are.
So make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a memo of understanding with the Cold Spring Fire Company. I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to be stopping, Ryan?
Yeah.
I guess that's the idea. Next approve completion of probationary period for Joe Norack, effective twelve twenty-six nineteen, as per recommendation of the Highway Department Crew Chief, Robert Downey. This includes a one dollar an hour pay increase. I think Joe has done a great job and from everything that Bugsy has told us, he's a, you know, a great mechanic and that's saving us a lot of money and helping us keep things, keep the fleets running, so I'll make a recommendation to approve the completion and the one dollar pay increase.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank Joe. Old business, approve hiring of temporary administrative person for Cold Spring Police Department, this would be Bill Wajarski, who recently retired. This is a request from Larry, our OIC, who needs, needs some help in, I guess, taking care of the evidence room, our materials have been lingering there.
Correct.
The, I brought it down to twenty dollars an hour because, just because when we hired Lisa to sub for Michelle, that's what we paid her, so I thought that was fair. If you think that should be higher, Larry started out with thirty and I've come down to twenty, so thoughts on that? We paid Lisa when she, she came.
I actually thought we were going to twenty-five.
What's that?
I thought we were going to twenty-five, which was what I think.
Well, it was being discussed and then when I, I found out what Lisa had was making, who is qualified, you know, I think more qualified for doing book day work. So that's up to you, so that's up to a discussion, if you want to make it to twenty-five, if everyone's fine with that, it's for sixty-four hours.
Right.
It seems to me that there's a different skill set. Bill has the skill to evaluate the evidence on how it should be, what should be disposed and how it should be disposed of. Lisa's skills were administrative and clerical, it seems as if Bill's in a unique position to do that. So I would, I would recommend something more than twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, so everyone good for twenty-five?
If you're fine with me.
Twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, okay, so we will bring that to twenty-five. So I'll make a motion to approve hiring temporary administrative person for the Cold Spring Police Department at the hourly, hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour, not to exceed?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars, sorry, and not to exceed sixty-four hours.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, the request for use of Doc Site Park for Hobbs on the Hudson, we did not vote, we tabled this last week because John wasn't here, John, you are here.
I'm here.
So if you'd like to add anything to the conversation, I think our concerns were the number of people, the ability to control that area and parking.
Right, in the application, I gave you the map, I wanted to give you sort of an updated one because I didn't, I saw some comments in the newspaper about using the whole field, the whole park and you're not supposed to. So I have that, we can just pass that down, yeah, I think I have a copy for everyone. I did some measurements down there and I, can I give you one more? So we sort of based this, the location of the gate, roughly where Ascend had their festival, gate, which is about a hundred feet, so I guess that private area. I think it's like between where the rocks start, there's the rocks that go along the roadway. So I guess that private zone is maybe about a hundred feet, and we were planning to go with an additional hundred feet in for where the gate would be, run like a snow fence or something, so people can come in and out. Now, this is a craft artisan festival, and I did see in the newspaper, and maybe that can get changed in the newspaper, but the newspaper, I think, indicated it's a beer festival, so our, our, our plan is an artisan festival for this.
Is it what's art?
Artisan, or you can use the word craft, so we did call it the Hobbs on the Hudson Craft Festival. So we plan on having artisans come in, you know, craft people, set up tents and have some food, have some music, and that's why you see all those little tents on the field, because that would be the artisans coming in, putting in a ten-by-ten tent, sort of in the area that we sort of laid out, those are all ten-by-ten tents. There's a little music stage where you usually, where we, we had it, we need the Fourth of July Festival down there. You have the stage by where the electricity is. It might have like maybe three or four food trucks, but we were also thinking of possibly reaching out to some of maybe of the churches or non-profits in town where if they wanna do some cooking, maybe some hot dogs, hamburgers, maybe a chicken barbecue, we would offer those spots for them at no cost. So, this is really focused on really the crafts. There might be a beer tent on the side to just serve beer, you know, twelve ounce cup or something like that, maybe have some wine there as well. There's a small fee, that would be a small fee for people to come in, nothing large. And it would be a festival, sort of similar to the Fourth of July festival that you have down there, where I'm not sure how many people show up. And that was the plan for this layout. So, it's, we would reach out to the people in town, any artisans or craft people in the town who would be interested in attending. We would charge a fee for the spot. We were planning on two days, Saturday and Sunday. I think I had the time on there, but I don't remember the time on my application, maybe ten to five. This would be an all, all around sort of a Hudson Valley, New York theme festival. So, we thought that with this hundred foot space, I didn't hear, know of any guidelines, if you had any guidelines on where to stop and where to end. But, we thought going in a hundred feet where for the rocks go along the driveway, it's probably about two hundred feet in length. There's a sign in the park from the, that identifies the park. We would start roughly right, right around there. People would come in and go as they please.
John, the, I would say that one of the major problems, major questions last week was where is everyone going to park?
Yeah, so we, we'll take care of that. So, what'll happen with the parking and stuff for vendors?
And where are the vendors going to park?
Yeah, vendors. So, vendors, we're gonna try to arrange with one of the businesses down that area to see if we can use some parking there. We also have parking up at, at the highway department.
Oh, so you need the highway.
So, we might use a highway department location, you know, so the vendors. And then, talking with the county, Putnam County busing, they were going to...
The highway department can't accommodate a hundred vendors.
Right, right. So, we'll also have, we also, the train station is a free spot as well. But, we were also thinking of possibly one of the churches or up at the high school. So, the high school allows you to park up there. I was gonna check with the high school. You can fill out an application and they have a gigantic parking area, you know, up behind the high school. So, with the trolley.
That's very, very gigantic.
What?
It's, it's not terrible.
Oh, yeah, no, it's gigantic, it's very gigantic. It's actually holds about a hundred cars up behind the high school.
Very gigantic.
So, holds a hundred, it holds a hundred cars up there, okay? So, between that and then possibly maybe one of the churches in town, if they're interested, maybe we pay them like sort of a fee to allow us to park twenty, thirty cars in there.
Well, one, one thing we can't go on is like, maybe we can call these people or talk to these people because that's not, you know, maybe those people will say no. And then where are we? So, if we, this goes any further, and this is, this is not my main concern here, is well, it's the second of my concerns. But, it's like, you know, if you don't have something secured before we, you know, we can improve this if you don't have parking approved. It's gonna handle a hundred or however many. We need to know how many, how many tents there actually be. If it's a hundred, then we need at least a hundred parking spaces. So, we need to have that secured. The second thing is like, from what I've witnessed down at your place, you know, which there's more room is that every vendor needs to drive in and needs to go to their tent and set up the tent, you know, they need to drive right to their tent. That's how, that's what I saw was going on. So, that's people driving all over this, all over these fields and setting up their tents. And that's a lot of traffic going in and out of the place, which is one thing we definitely don't want. And, and, and neither does New York State Parks. I think that's the biggest concern I have is the amount. I mean, unlike Ascend, which sets us up for, they don't have a lot of things set up in there and, and people are mostly all by foot going into there. So, they don't have hundreds or whatever, many vendors.
The other thing that Ascend did was kind of have these little trolleys that vendors could put all their equipment on and then just roll it up to their site. They, they had staff, you know, help you put it together and then take it away. So, you know, I didn't even have to park down there when I did it at all. So, I would recommend that. I've done that at a number of other festivals too where, you know, vendors check in and then you have like a little...
Yeah, like a cart or something, or like a, not a golf cart with a trailer behind it.
Something like that, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But, we're still talking about a hundred cars trying to unload and drive in and drive out, which to me is a lot. Another question I have.
Yeah, there's a guideline, like if there's a number, like if you came up with a number and stuff, I guess then people like myself would then, you know, say, okay, that's the limit and then we understand. But, you know, I understand we're growing and trying to understand how to use the fields in an efficient way. And I put that out there. If there's a number that you're comfortable with, you know, we try to work with that. But, if the application and the whole process doesn't really say anything about that, then, you know, I, I, I put that out there.
Okay, another question I have, you have a gate across. I assume because it's a ticketed event, you have a gate, which means you're basically closing off the whole of Dockside, other than a hundred, other than a hundred feet up in the front.
Right, like Ascend did. Yeah, like Ascend, Ascend had the fence, the fence and there was a gate there.
Did they close off the entire park?
Yeah, I was there, I went to it and it was there. So, yep, that's...
Where they started was up far there, wasn't a hundred feet though, was that the corner where the rocks stopped?
Yeah.
That's not indicated here, you're taking up another hundred feet.
Right, again, you know, I wasn't sure of how much space you really want people to, you know, use when they're out there.
Parks Department says we have to have it open to the public.
Right. But, you know, if you, if you said it has to be two hundred feet in, then I guess letting a person like myself know, it wouldn't be a real guessing game.
Why can't you do this at Mayor's Park?
Well, this is really very convenient location and stuff, mainly because you have an in and an out location entrance. It's not a wetland like Mayor's Park, so you're subject to have...
John, that's definitely not true. I mean, it's just not, we're both really familiar with that site. Dockside, or Mayor's Park is way easier access. It's a controlled area and, and highway department is right there for extra parking, you have parking along the whole street there. And, and that any wetlands, you haven't witnessed any in any of your events, it's over in the corner. In the first year that you had it, there was maybe some tire marks down in the corner, but, but it's, it's definitely not true. I mean, the, the ease and the better location, you know, as far as access goes is definitely Mayor's Park. And driving on that field, which is nothing to speak of, is, you know, I, I think a lot, lot more, you know, attractive.
It just seems like Dockside's ground is a lot, a lot firmer than Mayor's Park. That's just my experience being at Mayor's Park and knowing that, you know, you get a little rain and not half, but probably twenty percent, twenty-five percent is probably nonusable and stuff.
You're not living in the infield.
What?
The infield is...
In the infield, you can't use either really, yeah, that's a good point.
Is, is dry. I mean, the primary's in the northwest corner, as Dave pointed out, at Mayor's Park.
Which is in the pavilion area.
Right. So, is, is the primary reason why you chose Dockside because of the lack of groundwater?
For the beauty and for the artisans. That's, that's all. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful location and we thought with artisans or craftspeople, if people don't know the term artisan, for craftspeople and, you know, it's just, it's just really a beautiful location. That's, that's why.
That's true.
And, you know, if I knew, if I know that, okay, you want it limited at fifty or seventy-five, then I can, you know, sort of figure it out and see whether it makes sense for us and stuff, you know? And if you want us to be in a hundred feet or two hundred feet, well, let me know that so then I can like sort of do a little bit of a layout. But, you know, you give a map out and I don't know what you want.
You feel left and right.
But, it's good, but it's good though.
And when we've laid out here, seems a lot to us. And I mean, we haven't, you know, we haven't designed this whole thing. I've done the map, we've done all the work. It's taken us months to get it together. So, if it's not perfect, I'm sorry, but when you, we asked for a map because I guess we weren't expecting a hundred tents here with a lot of people going in. And when I look at this map, which is good about the map, is you've laid it out and to me, that looks like too much for us to take on right now. I mean, that's what it looks like. And that would be the reason for a map. We don't have a number and maybe we should come up with that. I don't have one. I've never gone down there and mapped off what at ten feet or twelve feet, whatever those tents are around the whole perimeter and seeing how close they'll be together, but how we're gonna get some. How are you gonna get the people in these tents over here? Because they're not gonna, they're not gonna lug their stuff over there. You're gonna have to drive across the lawns.
Right, right. And...
And the, and the lawns down there are not flat like Mayor's Park.
Right, yeah, there's a, it's a little bit hilly and stuff, I agree.
And there's stones around the side, on the whole side, which I guess you could roll over on the, on the far, on the east side, but...
I wonder if John would have limited to fifty tents.
Well, how, how small can it get where it's still worth your while?
Right, right. You know, because there is that attraction, right, for people, people who go to a festival like that, they're looking for a certain, I don't know what number they're looking for, to be honest with you. They go from fifty up to two hundred artisans.
They're looking for a critical mass. To make it worthwhile for people to go there and walk around.
Right. And maybe, maybe fifty might be enough.
Do you have a hundred vendors or seventy-five vendors ready to jump on this in a couple months?
I've been talking to a lot of people.
Okay, I mean, on your map right now, you're showing seventy-five tents. Another question, another option. Would you consider not selling tickets for this? You're getting, you're getting fees from all the vendors.
Get a small, get a small fee for the vendors.
If you don't sell tickets and open the park and leave it open to everyone and maybe cut down to fifty tents, there might be door.
Yeah, we were, we were planning on doing a small fee of like, you know, like ten dollars or something like that.
Yeah, but a fee requires you to put a gate.
Pardon?
A fee requires you to put a gate and then you, then you haven't got the park open.
Gotcha.
I think we can work around that, though. We've done that. So, there's, there's some flexibility there. We've done it, you know?
And sometimes, you know, when you do that, you also try to just get people to buy some tickets in advance, so you, you know, if you have a, a people coming into the alley.
Yeah, but you still need a gate to check tickets or something. And you need a place to keep people who don't have tickets out of. So, you've got restrooms and food trucks that you also don't want the general public near.
Right.
They're part of the fair.
Yeah. Yes and no, you know, not gonna hurt.
Well, that's, I mean, you have to be, you have to be one way or the other here.
John, I have a vested interest in this one. Can you change the direction of the music so that it does not go toward the village?
It's going towards the highway department this way.
Yes, then it goes to the highway department and it goes up the hill. I live up the hill. I just say I have a vested interest in this.
It wouldn't be loud music, it's more like sort of background. Let me ask you a question, would it be, make more sense to just go with a large tents, like two or three large tents and then have the vendors in their tents?
They're still gonna have to truck all their stuff there.
I understand that, but you don't then, we might not have to then like, like Dave is concerned with the tents along the river, maybe eliminate those and be able to sort of control them a little bit more in, you know, two or three tents. And I know this has gotten into details in the fight, but this isn't probably a proper...
It's also a two-day event. Are people going to expect to leave their craft materials there?
And we would have security.
Okay.
They would have to what?
Security.
Security, good evening.
They would expect to leave their materials in their tent?
Yeah. You know, and sometimes what you do too, is you can actually try to maybe have them come in on a Friday and set up and stuff and then have security for two nights. Again, additional costs and stuff, you know? The other thought, the thought too is having it here. Sometimes, you know, also with, say, the police and the traffic flow, you know, I know we pay for the, the police for the events, you know, you could, I was thinking, and I would have to get feedback from Larry, I didn't really talk to him about it, but you know, you could actually have a, a police officer up at the train station, right at that point where it breaks to go to the train station versus down. You don't get a lot of people coming down and, and directing people to park over at the train station. The train station's full and saying that you'll have to park up into the, into the town area. I don't know what you did with the Fourth of July and you have a lot of people coming from where, everywhere, they must just park everywhere. But, it's just thinking about parking situation, you know? And we try to promote it.
And we love that day.
You mentioned that you were thinking of getting parking for some of the vendors down by the river. Who, who has parking down there other than Hudson House?
Hudson House doesn't have one.
Somebody else down there.
Who?
Miller or something.
Miller has very little.
Ten mil.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
How many parking spots do they have?
I don't know, but I know the size.
How about twenty-five?
I don't think so. We know the size of it, I mean, I mean, so, yeah.
We can meet down there and stuff if you want.
I don't wanna meet down there. You can have to talk to Tim Miller about them.
I understand.
But, I'm just trying to figure out where you think, Hudson House, I don't know because...
And St. Mary's Church.
But, you're talking a Saturday and a Sunday, you're talking a Saturday and Sunday, those are church days.
Saturday, it's not a church day for that.
It's a wedding day, especially at the end of May.
Possibly. We have to check.
It seems to me if you could look at scaling it back a bit, I don't know whether or not large tents would be better, sorry, I can't quantify better. Maybe large tents would be better than a hundred smaller tents.
Right.
And you can have like a beer tent, cause you have, there's gonna be a little...
Forty by six, it's gonna be more for food. You know, there'll be like maybe one tent on the side, just on the small ten by ten where, you know, there, there's maybe a couple beer guys serving twelve ounce beers and maybe a wine person maybe serving a wine or something. Nothing, that's not really the focus here, the focus is the craft people, which the craft people would love to come to Cold Spring.
Larry?
Everything in the village concerning the amount of people that have been coming in for certain events always concerns me. Traffic flow with people, traffic flow with traffic in general, people coming to see the village on a warm day to spend money, to go down to Hudson House and maybe have lunch or stuff like that, or the village in general. As you know, the summer months are always our, our biggest problems. Just that alone, this is our second go-around with major events, first time down in Dockside. So, it's going to be security, security wise, it's going to be, it's gonna be an issue. You know, I always say God forbid, and I say, I mean God forbid, there's only one way and one, one in and one out, going over the, going over the bridge, on long terrace. You know, it all depends how many people. I just, I, I feel sometimes that when people, and this is not you personally, John, when it, they put in applications, they should have everything, kind of like some things ahead of time, like you discussed a few minutes ago. Did you get the church to okay parking? Did you get the high school to okay parking? We always rely on Metro North and we keep pushing everybody into Metro, Metro North. You know, there, there's a, there's a limited amount of spots in Metro North. If people come over, they have to park there and I know it's a weekend, but again, we can't guarantee that either. You have hikers coming up, they're parking there. And on July fourth, it's, it's, we're trying some further police force when we shut down Lower Main. And we shut down Lower Main at like one o'clock in the afternoon. So, if you're down there, you're in, you're out and that's it. There's no more traffic going down there and within thirty minutes, the MTA lot is, is packed. So, that's how we deal with it on July fourth. Whoever, you know, if musicians go down, they drop their equipment off and they get right out.
Right.
Those are my concerns. My concerns are, are, you know, if John's gonna hire private security, that's fine with me, but I still, we're still gonna need extra police, police officers that day. I don't know how many, because I don't know how many people there are gonna be. And we are considering, are we considering closing down Lower Main? If it's gonna be two thousand people, fifteen hundred people, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Like I said, it's a whole different, a whole different version because again, you're funneling everybody into an area where there's one way, one way in, one way out.
Right.
And Mayor's Park, you can go, you know, north on Fair Street, south on Fair Street, there's issue, there's a little more room you can get in and out.
It gets a little crazy though on Fair Street, you know, with the parking, you know, like the parking on Fair Street is just like you're asking for trouble down there.
But you have to look, John, you have to look at it from a security point of view. Again, if, if I need to get merchant vehicles in, if I need to get fire trucks in there, God forbid something happens.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure the people, uh, at the Garlic Fest out in California didn't, that was great for twenty, thirty years and nothing happened. And they wanted to have the guy go in there, would've gotten, would shoot up the place. I mean, these, these are things that I always think about.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to.
Oh, absolutely. And we would, uh, we're like sort of identifying that, uh, any bags are subject to inspection.
Yeah, these are just little things I look at.
That's what you have to do, you know, yeah. And the idea of having police right there at the entrance is always, is the best idea. That'll be a nice, a good deterrent, I guess, I hope.
Though, those are my concerns as they are for anything, even in Mayor's Park, or, I mean, it just, I feel, Dockside is that much tighter. You know, it will put a little more stress on, on, on doing it. I'm not saying nor, yes, I'm just, you know, those are my opinions.
I could look into the parking situation and, uh, I don't know, are you meeting again next week or the week after?
Two weeks, sir.
I think we have to really scale this now before you can even consider it. I'm not considering, I mean, if I were voting right now, I'd vote no against this. Because of the, the number of tents and locations and, and the in and out of the park. Also, it's going past the, you know, Laura, you know, Laura's property, so if something's gonna happen this big, she should be notified and make sure she has no problem with it. She's, uh, granted us, you know, we have an easement through there, but...
Is that something that the organizer's supposed to go check with her, or would that be something that would be...
Well, I think before we go, even that far, I, I don't know what the rest of the, what's the rest of the board think about the scale of this right now.
No, I agree with you there.
It's much too big. It needs to be scaled bigger.
I mean, how many people would you expect to show up per tent, you know?
It's usually...
I mean, just if, if no...
I think one, but I don't know.
Okay, so like if, if you just have one or two, an artisan and his helper who makes furniture and they put it in the tent. There's two people, uh, and then there's the food. Now there's, that's with a hundred tents there, that's already four hundred people with food and, and artisans without anyone showing up. So you already have a massive number of people just to make this thing go, you know, be there, for lack of a better term.
And musicians.
And, you know, that's what I'm saying. It's hundreds of people that are already gonna be there. And that's all the parking spots in Cold Spring, basically. And that's if no one else comes to town that weekend or whatever, so it's, uh...
John, how soon before you can lock in a more, more concrete number of how many vendors you think you're gonna have here? I mean, you say you're talking to people. I mean, you're talking to people, you're estimating seventy-five to a hundred. We're asking to get down to fifty. Can you give us a lock-in number?
Uh, not as small as it now.
Not as small, no, I understand that, but I mean, like how soon?
Well, you know where, where the, where the point is where it's not worth you doing this, because you're doing this for profit, I imagine, not out of the kindness of your heart, so...
Uh, well, you know what? I, I do a lot of it to, um, promote as well, just, you know, I feel like...
It's your business, John.
You know, or I'll lose money off it.
I understand, Dave, but...
I know, I'm not holding that against you. I'm just saying.
Business is good.
You know, I let a lot of not-for-prof, I invite not-for-profits to come and they come to the festival and stuff, you know, so, um, please.
That's, that's, that's not, it's not the point, John. It's like, are you, if you're doing this and, and it's not for profit and it's, it's promoted the area or whatever, then you can scale it down to anything we told you. So are you willing to do that? If I told you twenty-five tents are good, would you do that?
Uh, twenty-five tents, I don't think too many people, people will come to the festival.
Really? I've been to ones that I've traveled to that have less than that.
Yeah.
In Upstate, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like I'm just sitting in Cold Spring my whole life. I do travel to these things and see these things. And, uh, and there's definitely ones that aren't huge scales that are, that are well promoted and, uh, and people go to.
Well, we've got one right in Garrison in August. The Garrison Art Factory.
They have, they have seventy-five right down there. Yep.
So is there a number is what I'm asking you, John, that makes sense to you?
Maybe fifty, maybe fifty or sixty or so.
Well, I would secure, uh, see if we could secure some, uh, secure the parking.
Accurate estimates on the amount of people is really what...
And we'd have to move, and I think we should move the, uh, you know, the gate up to farther up where we did for Ascend, which is kind of like at the corner, at the end of the stone. That gives more park opening for, uh, you know, people that just wanna hang in the park. And then the other thing I'd suggest is not having them along the, the edge there, that maybe towards the end where there's, you know, towards the end of the park, there's, there's not a lot of grass or anything there. The center of the park is where they have, you know, people picnic or have the film festivals and stuff, and that's just gonna get trashed, you know, there won't be any grass there. So that's not gonna be the greatest of things, so... Um, you know, I think the consideration is, uh, people dropping their, uh, wares off, setting up their tents, going in and out of the park. Which is gonna be, you know, at least twice probably. If you'd like to come back with a, a lower number and, uh, you know, from what we've talked about, uh, we'd consider it right now. If you want us to take a vote, I'll, I'll do that also. But I think I, you know, I think in a kind of a straw poll and, uh, it's a no-go with this, the amount of tents here.
Well, I can check on, uh, you know, maybe the fifty to sixty number, it might work. I had to run some numbers. I'll check on parking and, um, two weeks, I'll come back and let you know if I have secured parking. Provide you with the name and phone number.
Good luck.
We need to check or something, but I'll, uh, make sure I got the parking lined up for fifty, sixty, or seventy vendors. You know, if, um, I think, uh, we were able to fit at least fifty cars, um, at the highway apartment.
I think it's about forty maybe.
That'd be nice to know, that number, huh? Because that would be, that would be a really good thing to, instead of guessing on that one.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to map it up, cause people just do whatever they want. We don't have anyone there to actually show them how to park. So if we had someone there, like we talked about, then we would know how many fit there, but when you go in there and park wherever you want, it's hard to do also. We're not gonna line it. It's like, I think there's forty people. I think we thought there was approximately forty. So maybe there's fifty, I don't know, so we could use that.
Okay.
The other thing is, uh, you know, Mayor's Park is, has been, seems to be successful for you, so...
It has, and it's, it's a nice field, and I'm not gonna say it isn't, okay? Um, you know, there's, there's a little concerns there and stuff. But we're thinking the Dockside is a, a pretty a place for, uh, this type of a festival.
I totally agree. If you need something bigger though, then I would think Mayor's Park is...
Are they the same size? Or it seems like Dockside might be bigger. You know, do you, physically, acre wide?
Dockside has more, about, probably is more acreage, but, um, but again, it doesn't...
Open areas.
Open area, it, it's probably a little bit larger than within the, uh, infield. It's probably a little bit larger.
So...
But it's got trees and Mayor's, Mayor's Park is open, so that really gives you more, you know, flexibility really.
So the concern's then, uh, so just so we're on the same page, is parking?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we have any, um, that, um, preference on, you know, the, and I understand no smaller tents along the river's edge? Uh, where, um, where the trees are? Right, uh, where you got the trees, uh, I won't consider that. Uh, do you have a preference whether it, does it matter if it's small?
I think the end of the park towards, towards the tracks is, uh, more, it's more an open area and it's, uh, and it's not a lot of grass there or it's, uh, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
Less can be damaged, it's easy to access, um, and the turn, there's a turnaround there.
Right. You're talking where the U's up, the, the two U shapes I have of those...
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um... And are we flexible with the fifteens?
Or maybe if they weren't U-shaped, they were straight, you'd get more in there and, uh, more people could hang in the other areas. But then you'd have an area where, you know, people could move their wares into their tents easier.
Yep, yep, um...
Also, there's a, you know, whatever it does, where you have the, uh, where you have the, uh, the restrooms and the food.
Mm-hmm.
That, that can all, you know, that was, that's like parking area too. Not that we want people parking there, but...
Yeah, I didn't see any like numbers or anything specified, I don't think, in the application, right, on how many people you would want to be parking on the, in there?
In the application, there is.
Yeah, there is.
Well, there's ten, but then you also have another line in there that says, "And others" and stuff. There is a place, maybe I could show it to you later on. Uh, it's very vague, so it gives you an opportunity to say, like twenty, you could have any number, to be honest.
There was allowances for people who were disabled and needed to get in and out to a wedding or something. You could come in and, and drop off there, so there was that kind of allowance.
Yeah, no, but for parking, it's, uh, it's vague and stuff.
I think we left it at ten.
Okay.
And the, the number wise, uh, is there, um, fifteen, sixty?
Let's say fifty-five. You wanna go sixty, we said fifty, let's do fifty-five.
Okay.
If I can make a recommendation as a vendor who does a lot of these kinds of things.
Sure.
Um, instead of having the tents all scattered out, when we've done places, fairs that have had tents kinda all scattered all over the place. Nobody does particularly well.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's good if you're, if you have rows of tents facing each other.
Right.
So that, so that there's kind of like a concourse that they can walk through, they can look on either side.
Right.
That actually works better. And it also kinda concentrates it a little, a little better. Then, you know, you can have the food and the restrooms and the music elsewhere, but, you know, where your vendors are...
Yeah, that's what we have. If you look at the map and stuff, those are, those tents are really like side by side, right, so there's three rows.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about having corridors.
Corridors.
With tents on, so like people walk through, you've got a vendor over here and a vendor over here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, sure, sure, okay.
Those events are better attended and people, that your vendors are gonna be happier.
Okay, thank you for that.
And it also has, winds up having less impact on the, on the ground.
Gotcha. I noticed in the application that you have a limitation on, um, people setting up the tents. Um, limited, and I'm not sure why. Um, a, a, a ten foot by ten foot tent, somebody can put it up. Um, a ten foot by twenty foot, I'd have to have somebody professional put it up. And I was wondering if that ten foot by ten foot could be actually modified to ten foot by twenty foot.
I think, I think the application talked about security, the tent being anchored down properly, or I think, I think that was what we were getting at. I don't remember the whole application.
Yeah.
A bigger tent needed to be anchored down and inspected. I think the town has an inspector.
I think that, I think the code enfor, I, I believe that the code enforcement officer must evaluate the tenting.
Yeah.
For certain sizes, and I, I can't remember what the size is.
And I don't remember the whole thing, but I think that's what we were getting.
In your application, it actually says ten by ten, uh, somebody can put it in.
Right.
Anything bigger than a ten by ten, you have to hire a professional person to install it.
Oh, yeah, I will relook at the application, because I don't have...
And my, my question would be is to, whether a ten by twenty? Yeah, yeah, hire a professional to install it.
Is there anything in the code that we shouldn't modify for you?
I have to look at the code, John, because I don't know what it says.
Details, 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 right? All right. I just saw, I was considering, I just wanted to know about whether or not ten foot by twenty foot tents could be installed by us.
I think it was yet, um...
Yeah, we have to move on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right.
How was business?
Um, okay, uh, request to purchase property. Uh, we also tabled this so last time, so that we could do some site visits, uh, which I did. Uh, Fran and I looked at both of these. I don't know if anyone else had a chance?
Could we, um, do you wanna move on to the next thing? I, I left, I grabbed the wrong document when I ran down to my office. And I, I printed out some additional drawings that, uh, you and I had discussed, but they're sitting up in the desk.
For the Academy sheet one, or?
Pardon me, no, for the Rock Street one.
What was that?
Pretty much done.
For the Rock Street one, I don't know if we needed any more information, honestly.
Well, I, I should, James, I can't tell where the owner wants to purchase, what land the owner wishes to purchase. It's not, I didn't...
I thought it was the front end from his, the property he owns here, or is it this red line going to this corner?
The, the, I printed a blow-up that's like, I'll just say, uh...
How far out?
Okay, if you want to, it's fine if you want, we can, we can hang on.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll be back in five.
Okay. I guess we go to approval of bills then.
Okay. I move to approve batch, uh, Bill's batch number fifty-four nineteen for a total amount of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. One hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll second that. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, approval of trustee's workshop, uh, minutes of the workshop for, uh, January seventh. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment while we're waiting for James? You sure?
I wanted to, uh, just raise a concern about pedestrian safety at the light. Um, I've noticed that I've only been living in Cold Spring for six months and within the summer with my family. And I cross that crosswalk a lot with my kids. And I've noticed that the walk sign only comes up if you press the button to cross. Which makes it so that, you know, it's a really busy intersection. Cars are taking a lot of right turns and they don't see the walk sign on and they just take a quick turn. Um, and it seems like if we at least had the walk sign come up, you know, as a, as a regular street light does every time the pedestrians are allowed to walk. I think that would at least help, you know, deter the cars from taking those quick turns. Um, in general, it just doesn't feel very safe. We have all these kids coming from Houding. My son just had a playdate with, you know, he had some friends coming over. They live right up the street in Nelsonville. And they were gonna walk home by themselves and their mom said, "Oh, no, I'm gonna go pick them up, because I don't want them crossing up there since it's getting dark." And I was like, "Oh, okay," so this is, this is a general common issue, that they don't even want, you know, twelve-year-olds crossing the street by themselves. So I'm just wondering, you know, if there's anything that can be done to just improve the safety, um, at that crosswalk. And also the crossing guard is gonna be out for a while. So, you know, it just seems like there's way too much opportunity for cars to turn very quickly and not enough to help kids cross safely there.
Yeah, there's police or someone, a sub, a crossing guard.
Yeah, crossing guard, it's, it's covered either by the police on duty or a substitute.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, there's no, there's no problem there.
Right.
There's always somebody there, so...
But is it possible to have the light, I just don't understand why you have to press the button in order to get your walk sign. This gets on your...
Oh, I see, I don't understand what you're, what you're proposing.
But you get to, you get to the light and the cars get the red light. If you don't hit the button...
Right.
And the cars get the red light.
Yeah.
The little walking sign, the little one, doesn't come up. It stays as a red, you know...
It only comes up when you hit the button.
If you hit the button.
Right.
Right, so most of the time, you know, kids don't think about it. And the cars, if they're gonna take a right turn and they don't see the walk sign, they're like, "Oh, I can go."
Well, yes, they can, as, as long as they come to a full stop and there's no intersection.
Right, but if the, if the walk sign was on, I think they would at least pay a little more attention. They would really stop. Cause right now, you know, they get there and they're not slowing down.
But how would, how would you do that? So that if it lays down all the time, then...
Like, that's how a regular, you know, street light works.
What's that?
That you don't need to press the button in order for the, the pedestrian walk sign to come up. But it would just happen every single time. And that way, I'm a car, I get there and I see the walk sign every time, that would slow me down. But right now, I get there and I don't see a walk sign for the pedestrians, so I'm like, "Okay, I'm just gonna quickly turn."
I know, unfortunately, I'm, I'm not sure a walk sign would deter a car from doing a dumb thing, but, uh...
Right.
I, you know, when I first saw that, uh, those lights, and they're not set up by the village, they're set up by, is it a county or a state?
I think it's a state.
I think it's a state, so the state put those in.
Indeed.
I assume that when you had a walk sign, that nobody should be able to turn, and that does, because you have ability to walk, but that's not the way those lights work.
I just wonder if more can be done to make that a possibility for, for kids to cross.
It's a state requ- request, so you have to put it through the state.
Okay.
And I don't know, who would, who would go through?
Department of Transportation.
Department of Transportation.
So it would be helpful if you could describe in email...
Okay.
What it is that you're proposing.
We could, I could, we could send it to DOT, I don't know, I don't know what they would say.
Okay.
I mean, it's probably, it's probably what's been installed there is what they recommended, so, but we could bring it to their attention.
Yeah, and I feel like what they have installed is more complicated than it needs to be. Cause if it was working like a regular light without all those buttons everywhere. And some of them are not that easy to access, like the one on the Wesleyan Willie's Corner. You can't have to go around and almost like stick your arm on the road a lot if you hit it.
If you take a look at the walk signals in New York City, the walk signals do not stay on the walk indicator the entire time the light is green.
But at least they come up.
Pardon me?
At least they come up. Like here, it doesn't come up unless you press the button.
Yes, I understand that, but they don't stay on the entire amount of time that the light is green.
Yeah.
I think the reason for the push button in our area is because of the, you know, because there's not a lot of pedestrians there most of the day.
Traffic's poor.
Yeah.
So what DOT is, their main objective is keep things moving, so, you know, like it's unlike New York City where it would change and you'd go automatically. I think that's the reason why there's the push button here, cause probably most of the time during the day, you know, so...
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's not a lot going on, yeah. Okay.
I will, I'll try to contact them. If you can do, send us something to the village clerk and, uh, we can, uh, pass that on.
Okay. Okay.
And we, we also like notify the, uh, officer in charge, uh, to have... And we, we also like notify the officer in charge, well, to have the police, you know, be conscious of the fact that cars are turning when people are crossing, so, you know, they need to sort of watch for that also.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it's happened to me enough times that, you know, just going to a library or, you know, just making like cross, there's been many times when it literally had to yank my kid, because my guy is just, you know, quickly turning and not paying attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure.
I can give them to John.
So Maria, I have a question on the, the code update report, you said we're gonna have public meetings and a public hearings. The meetings that we're having, like starting tomorrow, is considered a public meeting?
That is correct, right.
Okay. So then as we have those, those are the public meetings.
Is that a public meeting or is that a workshop?
It's a public meeting.
There's a difference.
No.
Yes, there is.
What is the difference?
Well, the workshop is where you, you, first of all, you don't have to take public comment, you don't have to, you don't have to.
Thank you.
You can, you, you discuss something and work it with the, with the, with the board itself. And a public meeting would be a meeting where the public can come in, and although it's not a, it's not a hearing, they can ask questions, they can participate, you know, more than a workshop.
And I would think that that's what we would want, with public participation.
I thought this was the, the board vetting, I thought that what we wanted for this was the board was supposed to be looking at this because it is now on the board to follow this through, so why would we want public opinion, public in, you know, input at this point? You'd want that at the public hearing, not now.
But sorry, I would think that you would want it as you move along, not just at the end. Given the volume of stuff that we're gonna have to do, I would think you'd like to get the pub- public opinion as you, as you move along.
Well, don't they have to be public meetings, because it's the five of us together.
Yes, it has to be a public, Dave's, Dave's point is that it could be called a workshop instead of a public meeting.
I, I didn't know we were gonna take a public input, I thought it was for the board, I thought that, I thought the reason for these meetings, I thought the next step from what you laid out was that it would come to the board, and the board would review this, and the board, and this is how it's read, the village board would then comment on, you know, make recommendations which would be accepted or not. There was nothing in there where the public is make, you know.
Is permitted to speak?
It is like, has their input, I, it seemed like, I thought it was for the board, that's what it specifically said. So now it's turning into like, we're gonna sit here and we're gonna then take public comments.
I would think we would at the end of the meeting. You, you prefer not? I mean, that's fine.
I do prefer not.
Okay.
Well, you don't have to take comment, do you?
No, we don't.
Did you run?
No, I quickly walked. You didn't drive your gas guzzling car up there in the back? No, electric car. That's right, my gas guzzled electric car, yeah.
Okay, if you, I mean, whenever, if you have the other.
So, um, so Maria and I spoke earlier, she asked me to clarify what the ask is for the purchase. So what I've done is, I've done a blow up, so it's kind of the, the north end of the street. So here it is without any indication of, you know, so you can see the property lines and all the other, uh, apartments that's marked out there a little more clearly.
So where is the line that he wishes to purchase?
Okay, so that's on these, over here. So the, uh, the property line is this dark blue line, right?
Yeah, 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 it's clear on the other line, right.
Right, okay, and then the gray is the edge of the road.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the black line is the overhead tower, right?
Yeah, right.
So, um, kind of the, kind of the, the max ask is to go from the pr- the property line, um, to the west, um, and all the way to the driveway edge of the, the driveway that's on village property as well for the, uh, condo that uses there.
And out to the gray, out to the edge of the street?
Uh, it doesn't go all the way to, uh, Kemble, but, uh,
No, I mean, it's the wall.
Yes, the house before. Yeah, pretty much.
So what about this?
Well, that portion is used by this property.
It's, it's not a question of who uses it, who owns it?
The village does.
Ah, okay.
Right, so currently, this, this, uh, leveled out area with the railroad ties that he parks on,
Yes. Yes.
That's on village property.
Yep, yeah.
And the steps are on village property.
Yes.
And the, the house goes, is right to zero on village property.
Yep.
So having a little bit of upper space made there, as well as having his steps fully on his property rather than a village property makes sense. And then to, you know, to create a legal, you know, kind of possession of that.
As opposed to the illegal use that he currently has?
Let's say grandfather use that he currently has.
That looks like a new railroad tie.
Yeah, I don't know when he did that, he might have fixed it.
Changed it on another copy.
Yeah, this other copy, uh, is just kind of a, you know, like a, a smaller ask in regard to include those steps there.
Do you need to see this?
But I think if you're asking, you might as well ask for the, for the, but, uh,
I wonder, I wonder.
But also given that this is right out to.
I wonder who approved those steps, no one answered.
Well, again, it was the, uh, it was the repair, well, for the record, I don't wanna. And I don't know.
So would they be carting into the hillside to?
He can do anything he wants, if he, it's just a question of purchasing.
It, is that? Yeah, I know, but it's.
Put the driveway?
Yeah, I was, because I was looking at it, I was like, how in the world are they gonna do this? Even if we sell the property, it just seems like the hillside just comes right down to the street.
Yeah, I, well, he's been talking to an excavator and to a civil engineer to have something more serpentine, because it, it does, there's a little bit of a wiggle left and right that tends to.
And the his, and the, uh, tradition of the quarrying done.
Exactly.
On the matter there.
Exactly.
How steep, um, James, I've never been up here, how steep is the drop off from here to the Percatrolas?
It's, um, well, you can see the contour line, so, uh, unfortunately the drop off here, I think it's steeper here, um, like, well, that's the common stuff.
But Percatrol is way down.
Yeah, it's with, well, yeah, but this is part of the Percatrol.
This is all Percatrol.
Yeah, but it's, you see it more here, it's, 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 it's all around the steep, he's kind of at the crest of it, but it.
Okay, I, I mean, that was just, I was just curious.
Yeah. This is by far the steepest still in Percatrol.
And that's where the, um, du- a double apartment, or what is it, so it's probably.
Yeah. And then the porch gate is just bigger than that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think a lot of people have been confused where the property lines are, and stone walls have been kind of red as the property line and all the rest.
Can, can we keep this as a village?
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay. Oh, good, there's two of them.
Yeah, it's, so two different schemes, one, if you were to say.
There's two.
No, there's two different ones, fifteen hundred, one's eighteen hundred.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
But, but to me, if, like, if it's, you know, if it's something to be entertained, I think bringing it to there is, you know, that additional bit is kind of inconsequential, but it does benefit the house though.
I'm, I'm pretty much at a, at a no on this, I mean, we'll go back and look at it one more time, but I just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to.
I'm not, I'm not for it.
I'm in agreement.
I agree.
More, as much space as we have, I control the space on this street.
Yeah, it's such a small street that if anything, I think, um, but I wanna know.
If it were somehow more usable, I would consider it, but what he would have to do there, why would you even wanna?
But it's not a question of what he would have to do.
No, but I'm saying, I know what has to.
Yeah, but I mean, it's such, it's such a small street at this point that, you know, for us to just sell off more of it, when people are complaining about the fact that they can't get the cars out of the driveways in certain areas around there.
Well, that, and the process that he would have to go through to create this more room would inconvenience everyone else and the street. Would make, temporarily would make accessing anywhere through that street more difficult. So, you know, I'm not crazed about the idea.
You wanna make the motion?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request for twenty nine, for the extra property on twenty nine, it's actually twenty nine to thirty-one, because the first time I looked at it, I'm like, oh, he only wants that much, and then I realized, it's a, it's a whole piece. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny, uh, the request of the owner of twenty nine Rock to purchase the rest property.
I'll second that.
I have a question, then, um, what about the, the stair location, I mean, is there a way to give him access to that, I mean, if future?
Yeah, I should access to it now, that's.
No, I know, but it's, it's grandfather, as James was saying, is there a way to give him permission to rebuild the stair there and use that? Uh, or something, I mean, is that in our interest?
James was the architect for the stairs.
No, I was the.
I'm sorry, he was the building inspector.
Building inspector. And I gave him a stop work order because he was greatly exceeding the amount of.
And so we pulled it back.
So it's really important, because last time, you did imply a little bit of, you know, me overstepping.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I did not mean to.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because I do try to do everything with integrity.
I do, I stand corrected, thank you, James.
There's no shortage of non-conforming things around.
My, my porch on my house is on village property, so.
A lot of people's front yards are, a lot of people's front yards are on village property, you know, all up and down, I mean, but anyway.
Of course. Right, so it's, there is that present throughout.
But would it be in the interest of the village to, uh, sell him a piece of land where his stairs, so it's his or?
I think, I think we should, I think we should hold off until he asks for it, and then maybe determine, he may determine that he wants to change his steps, and then, and then we'll, we'll.
Or if he comes back with a reasonably engineered plan for a driveway cut, you know, that sort of thing, but that's a driveway permit, which is different from, I'm just saying, right.
Okay, so that one's in.
Okay.
All in favor of denial?
What's my only discussion?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay. The other is two oh seven main.
I did look at, Dave and I looked at two oh seven main also.
I guess we tend to look at it too.
My only comment on that, um, and this is a comment I've had with other things that people ask to purchase, I would prefer, if they're gonna buy, prefer they buy, oh, the old property, you know, Academy and in front, up to the sidewalk,
Right.
rather than, I'll take this chunk, the village has like, you know, ten feet left or something.
Right, yeah.
Uh, if they, you know, purchase the whole thing from, and that's my opinion, so I don't know about anybody else.
I suspect that the, my client would, would be so inclined as well, but, you know, I just wasn't sure what the disposition would be.
Well, you have some concerns about the sightlines for that corner.
But that's, that's.
Going around Academy.
Yeah, but that's built into the planning, you know, village code anyway.
Okay, so they're not gonna put it on there.
Right, yeah, there's no, okay. There's a, there, we've actually marked it on the survey, I think it's one of the drawings that I've included where it actually ha- hatches out the required.
I saw it, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't changed by selling that, my piece of property, so I had, so.
So my opinion is not to sell, ignoring the discussion here, not to sell the entire piece, but to sell a potentially, I don't understand why the retaining wall can't be brought back in to be, uh, at the end of the proposed porch. The properties upstreet do not have their, one of them has a railroad tie retaining wall.
This one, I mean, I can't write this.
The others do not have retaining walls, um.
Well, if you go downhill, many of them do.
Directly across the street.
Right, yes. Yeah, they're adjacent right to the sidewalk.
Down, downhill, you've got a property that goes to the sidewalk, um, and then you've got two smaller retaining walls, and then, uh, then you've got the, the wall.
And almost every one of them, except for Frank's house that,
Frank's house.
on the corner that don't have a wall. Right across the street, we, there's a wall.
This house itself has a retaining wall.
This has a wall going around here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not in favor of selling the entire area. The purchaser, the owner wishes to purchase from here to the sidewalk.
No, from this black line is the property line to the sidewalk.
Okay, yes, and, and the purpose in doing that, uh, we were told, was to put in place a retaining wall to prevent further, uh, border, uh, against, uh, his, is, um, basement or the concrete footing, whatever. And I think that can be achieved by putting, by selling a portion of the property.
But Maria, isn't, isn't it similar to what we just said at twenty nine Rock that it's not up to us to discuss what he wants to buy the property for, it's just up to us to discuss.
Okay, so I'll, I'll change my, my statement then.
What we, what we want to, so.
I'm, I'm willing to sell that, the whole thing, I was, I'm, I'm willing to sell a portion of it. As far as selling this, no, that, that is a very narrow intersection as it is.
No, we, we were selling from, we started, this piece in here behind the retaining wall, this is village property in here, this was the piece I was talking about.
Yes.
So it's already behind the wall and sunk down.
Yes, and at some point the village may want to straighten out Academy Street, make it wider, which would require pulling the sidewalk in, and, and potentially bringing down that, that retaining wall. I just, I mean, I, I see what happens on Sundays when the Presbyterian Church is having its services, that they're parking on both sides of the street, you can't get through there. And when you, and when you come out of, um, Academy Street, there's a, no parking to the east as you get to Main Street, you can't see what's coming down. And the, the angle of the turn here forces you to, to make a very wide turn.
So you're, you're okay with selling up to here and over Main Street, or?
No, a, 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 a portion.
Right. So, so to the.
What do you mean, a portion?
End of the property line?
So the, I, I can't.
Where the retaining wall starts on.
I can't tell how much is being asked for there.
Okay, so, um, I think this, again, this is the overall survey of the property. Um, this is an enlargement, um, this shows the required sightline distance per code, so. Um, and, um, I think it's, our drawing is showing a retaining wall here, and a retaining wall that ends here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're reconstructing the porch that was originally here. And so what we would like to do is buy from this, this line back, this, this rectangle, um, to the sidewalk.
I'm okay with that.
The, this line is not, I don't, this is something from the, the survey that is not, I'll mark it with a highlighter to make it there.
So James, you're proposing, so you're showing a sightline here, um, which, if I remember correctly, has to be less than three feet.
Right.
The, um, the code, code requires that sightline, um, has to be less than three feet at an, at a, on a corner lot.
Uh, less than three feet?
Lower than three feet.
Okay.
Right, three feet or lower.
Right.
And given the, this is already going uphill.
Right.
So if this comes out to here.
That's not where the retaining wall is going, so.
But, so, so, you're asking to buy, to B U Y.
Right. Right.
And you're asking to buy to here.
Right.
Okay, which means you could put in a retaining wall to there.
With a, with a permit, with a work permit which would require oversight, you have that in place?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
So the ask is to purchase, um, the stair, it. If it would please you, Marie, to eliminate that little corner from that, that would assure that the required distances, that.
What's the, um, distance from here to here?
I think it's, I think it's twelve feet, maybe?
I think it's twelve feet, twelve feet.
Yeah.
It's twenty four total, right?
But, um, you know, that's the width of the porch, and it might have a, so, we are looking, uh, it's a, it's about, uh, eight feet. So it's, it's from here to there, the, currently it's from this edge, the porch to the wall is seven foot three, so it's, this, let's say it's about eighteen inches, it's, it's approximately eight feet wide.
If it's, if this is eighteen inches.
It's a total of twelve feet from the house.
Yeah.
It, if, if this is eighteen inches, then it's closer to ninety feet, right?
This, this, the dimension strength starts over the property line of, this is to this corner, so that's telegraphing further onto her property that she already owns. So from, it's, it's approximately eight feet that we're asking for.
Five, what is it, like?
So, so the.
Just the length?
Um, so.
So this is roughly eight?
Yeah, let's say it's, uh, forty-three plus twenty-four. Yeah, let's say it's, uh, forty three plus twenty four, sixty seven, um, and plus, uh, so.
Oh, okay, so let's just add those, okay.
A different color.
Okay.
But they would be probably more than happy if we went to where you were bringing that return back if we sold.
So, so.
Exactly, that, that would be fine too, but, you know, it's, keeping the geometry clean isn't about anything.
Yes, I know, I understand. Yeah.
So determine what the setback is that we want from the corner of Academy and sell.
Right, the required setback is twenty five feet from Main and twenty five feet from Academy. On a corner lot.
Well, that will cut into what they want.
On a corner lot, you have two front yards.
Well, we have forty one, or what is this, is forty one to there, or what is it from the corner all the way to here?
Uh, so, it's forty three from there, um, yeah, so.
Right. That would be well within the twenty five feet.
Yes, I agree.
Go right to that limit or whatever.
And how, how does this wall, I'm trying to visualize this wall since we're on a downhill, is this gonna be level, or is it going with, like, even?
It's gon- going to be level, it's even, yeah, similar to, um, like, uh, I think, Giants Works wall, there's several walls, there are two different ways, right? One is parallel to the slope, one is steps, they would be low, like, you can sit on it like seventeen inches high, you know, to, you know, at the low end to probably two feet high or something like that, but the idea is not to make it massive.
Just enough to keep the water.
And then how, just, not that this is my problem or your problem, but how are they gonna do with the, uh, corner there where, you know, that seems to be a, an entry port maybe for where, where the property line is there?
Um, I mean.
If you bring the wall all the way to their property line, right, and right now they just have this.
There's a tree, there's a tree.
Yeah, so I, I would, there is a tree that we have to look at, but probably retaining wall would make sense to stabilize that, just because it is.
And the tree would be purchased with the property.
Yeah, I, I, we don't have the. Tree margin, I don't think, the survey would show that. Yeah, but there is.
So, it's on there, yeah, okay, that's fine with me.
Oh. I'm, I'm fine with going, I mean, I, I see Marie's point in how that could be something eventual that you would like to, to do here, so, um, the less we give this way, um, that makes it work. So that we don't get into anything, or if we're gonna bring this up here, then it would be twenty five feet from their property line, I guess, I mean. In the eventuality, you made the turn there and made that wider.
So, we go in the whole blue, or we're cutting it?
No, we're cutting it.
What, that little notch off the end there?
Well, no, we're gonna bring it back in, well, this is where the retaining wall returns, right, is that right?
Mm-huh, right.
So we could bring it right to there if that makes everyone, that would make them happy, that would do what they need to do here and protect their house, and we would still own that piece of property.
Yeah, you talked about, uh, drywall.
Right.
Where's the drywall?
The drywall would be downhill and, um, presumably somewhere about there. If we need to pull it over, I mean, she's got some large trees here, so we'll call it over, avoid this, or it's, um, ideally, you know, you care where it's over the grass.
Yeah, uh, the, the question is, my, my, when I was thinking about the drywall, is what kind of water, how much water is a drywall expected to capture, since you've got the retaining wall
Mm-huh.
pre- for out, the only water that can get in is from the entrance path.
Right, and, and largely the, the rain that falls on this, this portion plus on the, the roof, so there are calculations to size the drywall, you know, by the area, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, what, is it, is it useful, that, that was my point.
Yeah, I don't know about calculation. The drywall?
Is, is a dry, is it?
Well, the d- the drywall is useful if, if it's a largely impervious area, if we, if we improve the soil in it, it has a better percolation. It's actually, that's fine, you know, very little water runs out of good drainage soil.
Can, can we also stipulate that the retaining walls, uh, are possible?
Mm-huh.
Should be slightly geared toward the, um, toward the residence.
Sure.
As opposed to the street, because otherwise I could see the ice forming and dripping down onto the sidewalk, it's, you know, it's right at the sidewalk.
Right. Mm-huh.
And creating a, an ice hazard.
That's right, yeah, you can definitely pitch it to, you know, pitch it to drain, I'd say.
Sli- slightly, you know, not looking for.
Yeah, yeah, that's a standard, it, it would eventually make sure that it's pitched to, to the property.
To the south.
Steve, any thoughts?
No.
Are you good with that, I mean?
I love it all, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve's done.
Lynn?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so.
I'm good with it.
We've covered everything, I think.
Where do we wanna bring the, uh, line to, I guess that's the most important part? I mean, if we're saying it has to be twenty five and we wanted to say eventually make this turn, then we'd need twenty five from that point up?
That would be good.
That's our property, so we can.
If we have that much room, then yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do, we have that much room.
Should take it, yeah.
Yeah, twenty five feet is, is the pro- well, that's twenty four feet right there, so, um, it would give us a little bit of wiggle there if it, if heading crosses a little bit right back, you know.
Well, the wall. That works.
So, in that way we can, I, you know, we don't have clear dimension on here, but we can, you know, in a resolution make it clear, twenty feet, five feet from that corner, yeah.
Right, yes.
Mm-huh.
Is, um, at the point.
Yeah, if you could give us that number, I mean, who would determine that, it would be you.
Yeah.
At the point where the, the retaining wall meets the sidewalk, is there some sort of silicone rail or an expansion, contraction, 'cause you've got two different materials there?
Mm-huh.
Would you be putting in something like that?
Yeah, usually there's a, uh, compressed wall, uh, filler, that does that, yeah.
Okay.
You mean against the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you think you could do us one more drawing and come back, and I think we're all on board, as long as we know what we're looking at?
Yeah, I'm. Excellent, yeah.
Okay, just get some lunch going on.
Great.
Okay.
So we'll table this and put it on, uh, like twenty eight.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Take a picture of this, so.[1755.24]